Well, good morning everyone and welcome. So good to have you here on the first meeting of 2020. We appreciate your participation. Happy New Year at this time. Decided to use that end. I will call the Pauling County Board of Commissioners work session for January 14th to order. Very glad to have Sheriff Gary Gullidge with us and Superintendent Brian O'Tott with us today. If you'll bring the list forward, Brian. And while he's bringing it, I wrote Teresa's name down here and then didn't read it. So Teresa Lyons of the school board is here with us. Thank you so much for being here Teresa. And if anyone has their phones still on, you can silence that. This time, I'm honored to introduce Pastor Johnny McBurroughs from Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church who will bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge. Thank you so much Johnny.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, again we come before you to give you thanks for another day. Lord God, we thank you for the beginning of a new year. We lift up this board, Lord God. We pray for wisdom that they will lead this great county. And Lord God, we pray for this great nation we live in. We ask you now to pour out your grace and mercy upon us. We pray for each one that works in Pauling County, those who are traveling to and from each day. And Lord God, we thank you now for all you do day by day to reveal your great grace and mercy toward us. Bless us now, Lord God. Remember our policemen, our farmers, those who don a uniform each and every day. Give us the protection while we slumber and sleep at night. We will always give you the praise, glory, and honor. We pray in faith. We ask to be called in your grace. In the name of the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. McBurroughs. Under minutes, the December 10th, 2019 work session minutes and the December 10th board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, the Positively Pauling segment highlights our Employee of the Month, which is Detective Stephen Quimby. And we went out to the sheriff's office last week and we have a little video here where we were able to honor him for that accomplishment.
The Pauling County Sheriff's Office is pleased to announce that Detective Stephen Quimby was selected as the January 2020 Employee of the Month for the entire county. Detective Quimby began his career with the Pauling County Sheriff's Office in April of 2006. He started his career in the jail and a short time after that moved to our patrol division where he became a deputy. Detective Quimby is a detective in our Criminal Investigations Division. As a result of a leg injury, Detective Quimby is now our desk duty officer. Basically what that means is that he is in charge of speaking and communicating with all of the citizens that come in the lobby and taking any reports. Detective Quimby has a desire to make sure he assists all the public in a good professional nature and he is very concerned about their well-being. We want to congratulate Detective Stephen Quimby on being selected as the January 2020 Employee of the Month. Way to go Stephen.
Good job. The first of the year, we've grown to have a tradition of recognizing our department heads. It's a very special time to me for them to realize they have our support and our commitment and also for them in return to kind of recommit to their staffs and what their missions are in their respective departments. So the way we're going to do this, this morning is as we read in alphabetical order, the department heads, and I'm not going to read it all, we're going to start with post one, Commissioner Davis, and we're going to call out the name. They will come forward and begin standing here over by the American flag and in front of the board. And then we'll take a picture. So, Mr. Davis, start it off.
All right. First up, we are, we have Brian Acker, our HR Director. He's 20 years with the county. He's got a BA in Economics and Psychology from University of the South and a Master's in Industrial Psychology with an emphasis in HR management from Appalachian State University. And I thought it was funny, you said, you said we're doing this alphabetically, starting with post one. I guess because one is alphabetically before two.
Right, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Acker.
Lori Ashmore, I think she is not here today. Director of Water System, five years of service, under contract. Bachelor's Degree in Civil Engineering, Registered as Professional Engineer in Georgia, 35 years of experience.
Next, we have Tim Atchison. Tim is our Fleet Maintenance Manager. He has 22 years of experience with the county. He has an Automotive Technology Diploma from North Georgia Tech.
And then Bruce Cole, who works in the Community Development Department, is our county engineer. He has a Bachelor of Civil Engineering Technologies, a professional engineer, Certified Flood Plane Manager, a Wastewater Operator Class One Certified Person, a Landfill Operator, Design Professional Level Two for Settlement and Economic or Environmental Control.
Next, we have Dave's Right Hand, Angela Ferris. She's a Senior Administrator Assistant to the Chairman. She's been with us for two and a half years. She has MBA and Bachelor of Science Degree along with Leadership Certifications from Bo Chatahuchi Technical College and Georgia Academy of Economic Development.
Next, we have Scott Green. He's the Director of Operations, been with the county for 15 years. He got a Bachelor's of Science Civil Engineering Technology from Southern Poly, Georgia Registered Professional Engineer.
I'd like to introduce Trevor Hess. He's our Chief Marshal. Trevor's been with, with us for a while. He's been in law enforcement for 20 years, six with the Marshals Bureau, 14 years with the Pauling County Sheriff's Office. Trevor holds a number of law enforcement certifications, including instructor certifications.
Then we have Deidra Holden, our Election Supervisor, in her 23rd year with the county. She is a 1986 graduate of Pauling County High School and she holds certification in Election Administration from the University of Georgia, Colvinson Institute.
George Jones. He's our Transportation Director. He's been with us for 15 years, 11 months, 13 days by date of January 14th. Associate in Engineering, Civil Engineering Technology, Bachelor of Science, Civil Engineering Technology, Georgia Licensed Professional Engineer. Yay, George.
Next on the list is Ann Littman. She's our Community Development Director. Ann's been with the county for almost seven years. She has a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Geography from the University of Georgia and a Master of City and Regional Planning from a school called Clemson.
I'm going to back up real quickly to Bruce Cole because I left out his 33 years of service and I think that's high on this team. But now I'm going to introduce Mr. Will Lyons, who's our Information Technology Director. This year marks his 19th. He holds a degree from Bernal University in Information Technology Leadership Program Graduate from the University of Georgia, an Information Technology Management Program Graduate also from Georgia Tech. How does that happen?
And next is our right hand, Rebecca Meredith. She's the Chairman's Office, County Clerk Office, 16 years with the county, Georgia Certified County Clerk Certification and International Certified Municipal Clerk Certification, Master's Education Management Development Program Certifications.
Next, we have Michael Justice, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. He's been with the county for 23 years. He's got a BS in Municipal and Community Recreation from West Georgia College.
Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to introduce the next person. We actually policed together a long time ago, Mr. David Mumford, who is now our E-911 Director. He has 15 years with Pauling County. I won't tell you how long ago it was that we actually policed together. He has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, E-N-E-N-A, 911 Center of Management Certification, Post-Certified Police Officer Instructor and Crime Scene Investigator.
And then Joey Pelfrey, who knows more about fire administration than all of us, is in his 24th year with the county and so Fire Chief, EMA Director. He's got a Bachelor of Science in Fire Administration from Columbia Southern, State Certified Emergency Manager Certification, State Certified Emergency Medical Technician and State Firefighter Certification.
Next, I don't know how this lady does it, but Tabitha Pollard. She has, she's our Finance Director, 22 years in the county, Master of Professional Accounting from the University of West Georgia.
Next on the list is Jimmy Renfro. He's the one that keeps things going behind the scenes as our Building Maintenance Manager. He's been with the county for three years. Jimmy is a high school graduate with a degree in Air Conditioning Technology from Chatahuchi Technical Institute.
Proud to introduce Mr. James Stokes Jr. He's a Director-in-Chief Appraiser of our Board of Tax Assessors with 23 years given to Pauling County. He's the current President of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, the highest Appraiser level with the Georgia Department of Revenue, 27 years as a Licensed Georgia Real Estate Appraiser.
And next, we have Allison Yates Bryant, Court Administrator, 12 years, 11 months with the county, with a degree in, from 1991 at Newcastle College, Great Britain, Business and Finance.
As you can tell, we've got a lot of experience and very well-qualified staff and the Board of Commissioners here, I can speak for all of us, very proud of y'all. Thank you for your recommitment to another year.
Okay, we're going to have to convince, everybody needs to be between Commissioner Baker, St. Lake, and Commissioner Stoker. So you're going to have short people step up.
Chuck, I mean, Scott.
This picture will be used throughout the whole year, so don't hide, don't hide, don't hide.
Brian, she's going to crop us out.
Scott, move in front of Sam.
Frank, step over closer to Joey. I know you're trying to hide. I'll do it to you, one, two, three.
Three years ago, we adopted a mission, vision, and values. That's another thing that I like to spend just a couple of minutes on. And in this regard, I'm going to ask the three citizens who have volunteered to come and share those with the board, remind the board, and by doing that, and be saying to us, let's recommit to what our mission is. So we're going to bring Mr. Ed Chapman forward and Ms. Elaine Lee and Johnny McBurroughs. And so as they're coming up, Ed is going to start off and read the mission of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, followed by Elaine to read the vision, and then Pastor McBurroughs will read the values, which spells the word heart. Not this heart, like H-A-R-T, but H-E-A-R-T.
Morning. Well, the mission statement reads, "With unity and purpose, the Board of Commissioners and its staff work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Pauling County a better place to live, work, and play."
All right, the vision, so listen up. The Pauling County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of all citizens of Pauling County to make Pauling County the preeminent place in the Atlanta Metropolitan Area to live, work, and play.
The vision, Pauling County Board of Commissioners' vision, the Pauling County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of the citizens of Pauling County to make Pauling County the eminent place in Atlanta Metropolitan Area to live, work, and play. H, harmony. E, ethical and efficiency. A, accountability. R, responsibility. T, teamwork and transparency. Thank you. Remember that charge each and every day. As old Baptist preacher, the scripture say, "Without a vision, the people perish."
Thank you all so much. Now, we're delighted to have in the house members of the school system, Superintendent Brian O'Tott I introduced earlier, and also we've got Colonel Hutton and Sheriff Gullidge. The, the announcement item reads, "The Board of Commissioners, Pauling County School District and the Pauling County Sheriff's Office have formed an alliance to educate students on the dangers of vaping." Now, I've got a rope illustration here that I wanted to hold up, and I did a little research on the tensile strength of ropes. This rope is made up of three strands, and if you were to measure the tensile strength of one strand, you'd think, well, it'd be one-third of the total, or three strands would be three times the strength of the total rope. But that's not the way it works. It's six times the total of one strand. So I think of that often in the school system and the Sheriff's Office and the Board of Commissioners, who don't, haven't just worked on the aid ed and the vaping problem of late. We work on transportation problems around schools, security in the schools. We're interested in the growth of the county and how we work together to be able to react to the growth and how we, the measures that we have to control that growth when needed. The aid ed program has been around since our county administrator, Frank Baker, he was doing this in the court system with, with coordination, and then when he came over as county administrator, he's continued it. And we did a video just last fall that we're going to watch now, and it shows the commitment and really what the kids are learning at a very early age about the vaping problem.
In 2019, the Pauling County School District had multiple incidents where students were impacted negatively by vaping. As a result of those incidents, the Pauling County Sheriff's Office, the Pauling County School District, and the Pauling County Board of Commissioners came together to form an alliance to combat the vaping epidemic. Each year, the Pauling County Sheriff's Office, the School District, and the Board of Commissioners host three alcohol-drug awareness programs in an elementary, middle, and high school. One of the ways in which the alliance decided to combat the problem is to educate at the ADAP program. At our ADAP events, we have incorporated a vaping segment which teaches students the dangers of vaping. Here are some clips from the vaping presentation at Pool Elementary. So why are we talking to you guys, elementary-age kids, about vaping and the dangers of cigarettes and alcohol wine? Because when you get to be a little bit older, you're going to be faced with choices, okay? And so who's a fifth grader? Raise your hand if you're in fifth grade. Have you guys started your DARE program yet?
Yes, we've finished.
You finished? Awesome. I will try to be here at your daring graduation, but what did you learn about making the best what?
Decisions.
Best possible decisions? That's exactly right.
Here at Pool Elementary School today, where the alcohol-drug awareness program is taking place for all the students, the goal of the program is to talk about the importance of making good choices. And one of the things that's so incredible to me about this is the collaboration that we have with our Board of Commissioners, our Superior Court Judges, and our Sheriff's Office, as a community coming together to talk to kids about that importance of making good choices. This is just one way that we collaborate together in support of our students and our community, and on behalf of the school district, I can tell you it's greatly appreciated.
Is it legal to have a vape or a cigarette or anything like that while you're a student in school here in Pauling County?
Yes.
No, it is not. It is absolutely not. We take kids, and sometimes they get arrested, sometimes they have school sanctions, but it is illegal for a student to possess a vape.
I'm very thankful that we can collaborate with the Sheriff's Office and with the school system, the school board, in addressing this issue of drug problems that probably every county in the United States has, and with a new problem that's coming along with vaping, something that we really want to work together to address and to confront.
Our deputies have seen firsthand the problems of vaping in our school system. We are committed to working with the Board of Commissioners and also the Board of Education to combat this problem.
I truly feel blessed to work in a community where our 30,226 students are supported by our Sheriff's Office, our Board of Commissioners, as well as our municipalities. The purpose of the program that's being presented here today at Pool Elementary is giving students information on making right choices. I would just encourage our parents, grandparents, and others to talk to your students about the dangers of vaping and illegal drugs, because these are life choices that can have a lifelong impact. Again, I'd like to thank this community and our partners for supporting our students.
Speaking on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, all five Commissioners, and really our staff, we are totally committed more in a support role with the Sheriff's Department and with the school board and the school system staff to come together and make our approach to the vaping problem stronger. And I look forward to all the kids in Pauling County having the resources to make good choices in this area.
Parents, make sure to talk to your children about the negative consequences of vaping. Not only could you have lasting health impacts, but you could also have criminal charges. And remember, it is illegal to take any type of vaping device to school regardless of your age.
Great job, Mr. Harkins, Jeff, and your staff for putting that together. And at this time, I shared earlier via text that if Dr. O'Tott and/or Sheriff Gullidge wanted to add anything or while you're here, feel free to go to the podium and fight for who gets to go first.
I'd lose that, so I'm going to let Sheriff Gullidge have the option.
First, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the Board of Commissioners, Superior Court Judges, because Mr. Baker, I believe this is the sixth year that we've had ADAP in Pauling County schools. And I did just a little mental math as the video was playing, and this program has impacted over 15,000 students, and that's a low estimate in terms of the number of students who have been able to receive a presentation a day solely dedicated to them to think about the types of choices they make and hopefully influence them to make those positive choices about their life at a very young age. Just wanted to make sure, a couple comments. One, to the parents and guardians in our community, please take a moment to talk to your students and your children about the issues of vaping and of course, smoking and illegal drugs. Again, I cannot tell you enough how important it is to have those conversations with your kids. Stay in tune and in touch with what's happening around them, the friends that they have, and the types of activities they're participating in. Our kids are truly the greatest asset this community has, and we're very privileged to work in educating over 30,000 of them on a daily basis. So one, to our community, please be aware of what's happening with your children, have conversations with them, because vaping, as we've seen through coverage in the media as well as here locally, can have a significant impact on the health of young children. The other thing I'd like to say is Sheriff Gullidge is behind me and he is always behind the school district. Whenever we need support from the Sheriff's Office, I truly feel like I can get on the phone and call Sheriff Gullidge and anyone in his department and get the type of help we need to support our kids. I had the great privilege of starting to work with Sheriff Gullidge, and I believe it was probably 1996 when he and his canine Bosco worked in Dobbin's Middle School when I was principal there. But he has a heart for kids. This department has a heart for kids, the Sheriff's Office. And I'll be honest with you, they're the partner, and I will say this, and I've said it many times, that our district is so lucky and fortunate to have supporting our kids, our staff, and this community. So I would like to take a second while Sheriff Gullidge is up here to thank him personally for all that you and your department do for us. I mean, they are. When you say someone's a phone call away, that is 100% true. And you see Sheriff Gullidge and his deputies in our schools, whether they're SROs or other officers, supporting us. Last group I'd like to thank is the Board of Education. Teresa is here today. Thank you Teresa. They're so supportive of this as well. They recognize that what impacts our students socially, health-wise interacts with how they perform in our schools. And they have been very supportive of our efforts, of this combined effort to, of course, make people aware of what's happening with our kids. I'd also, I said last, I'd also like to thank our Board of Commissioners and our Superior Court Judges. You know, having the foresight to have activities like this where students can see the people around them, the leaders of our community come out and say, hey, it's all about the choices you make, is something that has a profound impact on us that are there, but also those students. And lastly, all the folks who were just up here a minute ago, I think I took account, there's over 15 or 16 folks that we work with on a regular basis, whether that's about a problem with, concern with roads or communications, we're just very blessed to work in a community that works together. So on behalf of the school district and our board, thank you for your support, and we'll be excited to share this video on our website as well.
I think I'm going to hire him as my spokesperson. He's hard to walk up behind, but he pretty much hit everything, the nail on the head. We need to get these parents involved with these kids in their day-to-day lives. They can't just take them to school and drop them off or just let them come and go as they please. They've got to get involved with what's going on. This vaping is a serious issue. It's causing some serious health concerns. I know a lot of people says, well, ain't much to it. You know, some of these vape pens that's got THC in them, some of them's going up to 90% THC, they're going to overdose and you're not even going to know why, and they're not going to know why. They think, I'll hit it one time and it'll be good. Well, they hit it one time and they're in the floor. So it's very serious. You need to get involved in what's going on. I'm always proud of the cooperation that we have and the teamwork we've built up with the Board of Commissioners, with the Board of Education, really with every department in this county. I can go from Scott Green to Frank Baker to Tabitha, as I look around, George Jones, I never pick up a phone that I don't get what I need. Jason Phillips the same way. I mean, I can go around the room and just about everybody in here, Deidra, anything we need, you just pick up the phone and we all make it happen. And I'm proud to be a part of this team. I know you're big on Team Pauling, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I think we have a tremendous amount of people here that's, they got this county's, just like me, they got this county and they're hard. I don't know how to describe it, but it's, I mean, this is my home, I want to make a difference. You know, I don't want to go anywhere else, I want to make a difference here because this is where I was born, where I live and work, and it's where I'm going to die. So you know, it's home to us and I appreciate y'all for taking the time to let us do this. Stay involved with your kids, that's the best advice I can give you. Don't, don't put them in a closet, just stay involved in their life. Thank y'all.
Thank you all for being here and welcome to stay. I know you've got a ton of work to do also. Good way to start out the year. Under invited guests, we have none this morning. Bid awards award the purchase of public safety computers to the lowest responsible bidder, CDW, in the amount of $332,321.27.
Good morning, Happy New Year.
Good morning.
This is, unfortunately, our computers don't last forever, so we have a replacement schedule of about three to five years. It's rotating, we can't replace them all in one year, so we replace a few a year. This one was targeted to be in line with when the jail comes online as well as the records management system that is being, going to be utilized throughout public safety. So it is a purchase of about 273 computers for this year, and we only had one bidder, but we did make a comparison to pre- We only had one bidder, but we did make a comparison to previous purchases, as well as going cost for those computers. And this will be funded $110,000 out of FFNE for the jail, from the jail budget, and the remaining amount will be from the SPLOST project, the amount that was allocated for the New World CAD and Records Management System. So unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much. We have no reports from committees or departments this morning, and we'll have a lot more in two weeks. No one signed up for public participation. Under the consent agenda is a consideration of the following items. The first one, we're doing a different renumbering system, so it comes as number two under consent agenda. Adopt the water system job classification for an operations team leader, and number two, the water plant operator. And next is to adopt the Sheriff's Department job classification for bonding and visitation/control technician. You can see, we're about to get a water plant and a detention center finished. Next is to appoint Jennifer Farrell to the Animal Control Hearing Board as the post-two representative with a term ending December 31, 2020. Next is to approve the amending of the October 9, 2018 Board of Commissioners Minutes to change Resolution 19-51 to 19-50A due to a clerical error. Number six is to declare items listed on surplus, or as surplus, and to approve their disposal through auction or trade. And these would include, all of them are sheriff's vehicles, and it's car unit number 11, car unit number 24, car unit S-92, car unit S-143, car unit P-28, car unit P-29, car unit S-71, and car unit P-39. Any of the commissioners like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business for this afternoon? Under old business, we have none. Under new business, let's discuss action to adopt Resolution 20-01, establishing the qualifying fees for local offices and authorizing the publication of the same. And Ms. Pollard's going to present this along with Mr. Phillips.
As we enter the 2020 election season, there are a few steps that have to be taken. So this will allow the set qualification fees to be set. They will be sent to the new era before February 1st. Sets the qualification fees for all of the upcoming elections, as well as March 2nd through March 6th for the week of qualifying. And the general election is May 19th.
Anything to add, sir?
No, she did a great job.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Pollard. All right, that's the conclusion of our regular business. No one has signed up to speak on non-agenda items. We're going to begin adding at the end if anybody, any of the commissioners would like to make an announcement or refresh us or tell us when a certain event's coming up or whatever you want to say. So I'm just going to, I guess I'll just start with Ron and see if you have anything.
I'm good, Dave.
All right, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. On this side.
Tell you all, I got to say, if I had a voice like Johnny Burrows, y'all would hear me say something all the time.
He brings it, doesn't he? Well, I do have a few things. One, I was going to introduce Frank to give us an account of the great service, of the great responses on Saturday to that tremendous storm that came through here. And actually, well, I won't steal your thunder, no pun intended.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to let the public and the commissioners know that our EMA staff did a great job. Stephen Dooley, Director, EMA Director, and Eve Coggsdale, the coordinator, they started early on Saturday. I know I had some communication with them, and I was out there with them early. And they were watching this thing as it developed, as it came into Georgia. And we got everybody involved, the Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, I'm going to put my glasses on so I can actually read my handwriting. Sometimes it's difficult to read my own handwriting. DOT, the Marshals Bureau, we want to send a shout out to them. Everybody that was involved, we were boots on the ground very quickly. We were boots on the ground during the time the weather was coming in, and as soon as it went through, we had folks. A special shout out to our CERT team. Those of you who don't know what the CERT team is, it's our Community Emergency Response Team. And they were active, they were active with us in the EMA really quickly. And then as soon as we could deploy, we got them out. So I just wanted to give everybody an update. And, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you being out there with us a little bit later in the evening. But our team worked like it should, and it all goes back to training. I see a lot of public safety folks back there. Being a public safety person myself, I can't stress enough the importance of training and training and training and training, even training in the rain. I see Colonel Hutton back there giving a smile to me on that. But that's when you know you're doing the right thing, is when you're deploying and after all this training that you've had. So we do appreciate it. But all of the agencies worked like clockwork, and I want to send a shout out to everybody. And Chief Pelvery, thank you. Your team did a great job, too. And I know Chief Ellsbury and Wayne Barron were there with us early. So we got a lot of stuff done, but thanks for letting me make that announcement.
Thank you for being out there and being with the troops out there. Sheriff Gullidge, another comment?
I'd probably be remiss if I didn't ask you to come up here. I'd like to notify everybody. I know everybody knows that we've lost Bruce Harris this week. He was the sheriff here from '93 till I got elected. Big shoes to fill, still trying to fill them. I think if I can get both feet in half of one of his shoes, I might can fill it up. He's the reason a lot of the stuff that we've got at Sheriff's Office is here. Most professional guy, most caring guy. There's no way I can say enough about him, but if you would, if you'd allow me to honor him with just a moment of solace in the room and ask everybody to please remember his family in your prayers, please. Godspeed, 01348.
Thanks, Sheriff Gullidge. I've got, I guess, three more things. I'd like to thank Ms. Pollard for getting the CAFR out. That's the acronym for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and it'll allow us to start to build the next year's budget. And actually, at the next meeting, we'll have a mid-year review of how the revenues, how the finances look. He's not here this morning, but we have another leader that's coming to Paulding County. It's Mr. Michael Hughes, had been selected by the EDO. The EDO took a lot of time to find the right person for this position. You want to say anything about it, Brian? Since you're Chair of the EDO, or? Guess I'll put you on the spot, didn't I?
Yeah, appreciate it. Now, you know, it took a long time, a lot of interviews, a lot of searching to find the right person. Michael Hughes comes from a well-known, successful county next door at finding economic development opportunities. He's retired, and coming February 10th, hopefully we'll have a great start to take the next step to developing Paulding the way we want to work, live, and play. So he's going to be a great addition.
Thank you. Lastly, it's already mentioned in the short bios when the staff was up here, this man in the gray shirt sitting right across from me, a little bit of gray in his beard there, he got his professional engineering license just in the last couple of months. So I'd like to congratulate George Jones on that great accomplishment. We do have a need this morning to go into executive session for personnel, real estate, and pending and potential litigation, so I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, or a second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Kaker, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned into executive session. Okay, we adjourned this executive session, and we'll call the work session back to order. And we have a motion that applies.
We will stop talking to each other and make the motion now. Sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion that we add to regular session agenda, the approval of a settlement agreement in the District Attorney, Dick Donovan, and Jamie White employment matter.
Okay, we have a motion to add that to the afternoon's agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, by Commissioner Stover. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 5-0, and that's the conclusion of our regular business for the work session. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.